Our meeting's ordered. We're gonna start with committee meeting first, and so I'll turn it over. It is 5:30. I'll turn it over to Alan Nix.
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Committee, Public Works Committee has a couple of items. The first item is a discussion of a request from the Habitat for Humanity. I think Mr. King has the information to present on that. Is that right, Mr. King?
Absolutely, sir.
Okay, and I'm gonna pass to Mr. King to present that to the committee, please, sir.
Yes, sir. If committee members and other council members will recall, we kind of brought this up at our last meeting, that this would be coming forward. So recently Habitat for Humanity had land donated to them off of Drew Street, and it will allow for up to six lots for houses to be built into the future to go along with that, their program of being able to provide housing. Problem comes in is there's got to be a public street bill along the curb, gutter, sidewalk, and public water and public sewer line. Ordinarily, in a private development, that private developer puts those in. In this scenario, and you've got another item that's in your agenda packet, Mr. Williams has been able to put together some numbers with an in-house crew. You're looking at about $214,000. If it goes out to market, be about $345,000, which in this case, without some sort of partnership, pretty much means that there wouldn't ever be any homes built on that land. And so Ms. Morrison from Habitat and I kind of discussed a partnership with the city. We've spent a lot of time talking about affordable housing, and so the proposal would be that we would take charge of building the public infrastructure on this project so that Habitat could then start providing homes. And so that's kind of where we're at.
Okay. Questions from committee members or other council members?
Yeah, how many?
I had one.
What? How many homes total?
Right now, with the design, it would be six lots.
Six lots.
I know normally when the city does construction, et cetera, like this, or when a developer does, there's usually engineering involved to determine grades, elevations, et cetera. Is that gonna be something that Habitat can furnish for us for the actual construction work?
So they have an engineer that has donated their services to this project?
Wonderful. That uses a lot of the burden.
It does.
Mr. Nix, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we know the size of these homes? Are they, I mean, is there going to be a square footage requirement, or?
It meets our zoning requirements, and so I believe that's a minimum of a thousand. I don't know that we have floor plans or anything like that, but...
Right, okay.
Any other questions?
I actually have a question for Ms. Morrison, if you don't mind. Yeah, if you don't mind.
I don't mind. I look forward to it.
I know that, of course, you know, I spend a lot of time on the board, and one of the issues we're trying to find families. Do we, do you have families lined up for these builds, and what do you expect the build time to be on them?
It all just depends as far as the build time. You know, historically, we've done one build a year. We are closing our newest home that we've partnered on. We are closing on the 29th for that one. We do anticipate finding a lot of families. One thing, we have been able to increase our target from 40% average median income to 80% average median income. So that gives a little lower, or a bigger pool of people. Another thing that's happened is that we have exploded in population with people working in retail that fit that dynamic that have no homes to qualify for. So I don't know that everybody, except for Mr. Basket, understands that when it comes to qualifying for a Habitat for Humanity home, they do have to afford a mortgage. It's a 0% mortgage, and it's based entirely on their income. So it isn't just giving a home away. So we do, it is an extensive application process. Sometimes it has been hard to find people that are in that range that have decent enough insurance, I mean, credit scores, or background checks, or whatever the case may be. But I'm thinking with the dynamic that we have right now of people that are in that lower income bracket, and there is no affordable homes. I mean, I came last time, and 380,000 was considered an affordable home when I was here at city council meeting last time. We're looking at homes that are half that, you know? And so it's decent, affordable housing, and I think it's something that more and more people are going to be looking into. If we get this partnership, it might be, and depending on the kind of fundraising that we're able to do, we just had our fundraiser, the more we get partners, maybe even some corporate partners, to where if we could build two houses a year, we would love to be able to do that. We're all volunteer. We can only do what we can get our hands around. But as Mr. King said, we can't get our hands around much of anything at $300,000.
Absolutely. So this will keep you busy for six, seven years, by the way.
Possibly, unless, like I said, we actually had someone speaking with me at the fundraiser that might be able to donate some funds to where, like I said, maybe we can do two houses in a year. And a lot of that'll be gauged on how many applications we have come in and getting those processed and seeing how many families qualify. And so it's gonna be built based on funding and families that qualify for the program.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I appreciate everything you do.
Well, thank you.
Committee members, we need a motion and a second to forward this to council for action in the February meeting. Mr. King, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the committee?
Mr. Chair, I make the motion that we send the partnership with Eropa County Habitat for Humanity for Drew Street on the council for full approval.
Okay. Second, I've got a motion and a second. Mr. Cook, did you have a comment or question?
Well, one question with regard to the financing committee. $213,000, and we would do that internally primarily using, and that's the count of labor cost and whatnot for our staff to provide that.
Yes, I believe that's correct. Is that right, Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? That motion will go to the council next month with a favorable recommendation, and then the full council will take action on it.
Thank you, Mr. Nix.
Thank you. I have one question. It's semi-related. Do you have any other properties around town that you're looking at developing currently?
This is it.
Okay.
And we have been praying and hoping for this for years. We, it's been three years since we've built a new home. We had switched to doing ramps and repairs and things like that because we had no more land anywhere in the pipeline. So having this property, having it donated, is an answer to prayers.
The Lord works in mysterious ways, doesn't he? Thank you very much. I appreciate your service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the wastewater treatment plant operations amendment. This is a contract that we have had for a number of years with CH2M Hill/OMI. They've changed hands and changed their name several times, but they are in charge of the operations, the day-to-day operations at our wastewater treatment plant. Because they are literally a global company, we found it advantageous to maintain a contract with them because they have better opportunities for pricing and quantities for the chemicals and other things that we need. They also help us with some of the repairs and other things out there because they have the ability and the staff and other expertise to help with maintenance, operations, et cetera, on the plant. They've done a really good job taking care of it. Annually, that contract is reviewed, and this is another amendment to that existing contract. This will be, oh, let me back up. It is amendment number 18, I believe. Let me verify that. I've got it, yeah. Amendment number 18 to that contract. The bottom line is, for the annual operation out there, it would be $1,008,430, which includes the sludge-holding chemicals and the fats, oils, and greases program that they currently run also. All of these things are, they're not routine, but they are a part of the cost of doing business and operating a plant like that, and they do it very efficiently for us. Mr. Williams was successful in lowering that request by several thousand dollars to a 3% base rate increase, and so that's why the number is as, and I hate to say it this way, but as modest as it is of an increase considering the size of the contract. Comments or questions by council members? I mean, by committee and/or council.
Alan, when was the last time that this, and maybe Nick should address this, when was the last time that we went out to bid for this? I assume there's other companies that provide this service?
I believe this is the 28th year that we've worked with this particular group. Now, they have changed hands several times, as Mr. Nix mentioned.
Do you feel like it's, obviously, you feel like it's in line with what we could do at the marketplace?
I do. I feel like it's one of those contracts that if you were to go out, we, I would be concerned that we would find out how good a deal we really have.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
A partial answer to your question, I think in '26, which is next year, this contract, we're in a five-year renewal of that contract, and at that point, if it's the will of the council, we can discuss whether it's to our advantage to go out for bids on that, or if we want to continue to renew with them. But they've been a good partner out there for us up to this point. Other questions or comments? If not, I need a motion to approve amendment number 18 to the agreement with CH2 Hill/OMI for the maintenance and operation of the treatment plant for the sum of $1,008,430 total. Second motion, second? Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Okay, that will go to the council in February with a positive recommendation then. Mayor, that's all that I have for the Public Works Committee. Thank you. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. We were bringing this back as a request, and I think that, I think I addressed this with council in December, that we would be very used back at the committee meeting in January, and along with the staff has reviewed and looked at different options for us with regard to the proposed revision of B2 zoning district. And this entire thing was with regard to auto paint, auto paint and body shop, and whether those need to be included. Right now, they're excluded, and whether they should be included as a conditional use for the B2 retail commercial district. And we initially, as a council, accepted our recommendation last June, July, somewhere in that neighborhood, of basically taking no action because of decisions made. And, but since that point, we have been asked by one of the city council members to reconsider, and I, that, this is the time to reconsider, I guess. And the, this particular issue had to do with, I think originally, the initiating thing was the property across from the stadium up there, the building that we talked about. There was a company at that time interested in purchasing that building for the purpose of putting in a paint and body shop for there. The, that was turned down because it did not fit within the particular zone, and because it does not fit in the B2 zone, and that is on the B2. So that is the purpose. I mean, that's what was the initiating group. Whether that particular company is still alive and moving or not, I can't tell you. But the conditional use, we have other items in there that, with regard to auto repair, tire repair, all of those fit within a B2, but paint and body does not. That's not to say that we don't have paint and body shop in a B2, that is the case. There is at least one that I know of in the community that came in under a B2 zone. So, David, would you like to address anything with regard to this?
Yeah, I just, I have a quick question. Where, and Steve, you might wanna step up here if you don't mind. So with it being a conditional use permit, if we were to look at that, if we're, you know, look to say, hey, you know, we're fine with this in this spot on the conditional use permit, one, if the property is sold or changes hands, is that conditional use permit, is it eliminated at that point, or?
If the use continues, it would not be eliminated. If the use terminated, then after a certain period, then anything that came back into that building for that same type of use would have to come back through the process.
Would have to file for it again.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Am I correct in that we do have one other entity in the community that is perhaps, that would fit this category, that is already in operation?
Yes, sir. I believe we have a business that maybe right after the adoption of the 2018 codes, zoning ordinance that was approved, and it is operating as a paint and body shop. It's in a B2 district. So that was, I believe, back in 2018, 2019, if I go on my memory. And so it is out there. We have spoken with that particular gentleman, and he's open to the rezone request as necessary. With this conditional use, and in your packet, you'll see the proposed ordinance revision. All we did was modify the conditional use definition and listed in there as examples of type of conditions that the city council could place on a conditional use permit. And then in the B2 zoning district, we added as a conditional use the paint and body shop category. So the only way this would ever be approved in a B2 district is through the conditional use permit, and then the city council would have the ability to kind of open the door on what we would want there as those conditions to make sure that business fit in well with the surrounding area.
Okay. Reemphasize that last portion again with regard to the council.
So the city council?
So we're all clear.
Yes, sir. It would go through the process. It'd go to P and Z first, and then to city council for final approval on the conditional use. And it's not a limiting set of conditions that we've included in the definition. It's examples, but not limited to. And then, so as it came to council, if there was a concern about the type of business that was applying for the conditional use, then the city council could impose those conditions, and those conditions would have to be upheld for the use permit to continue.
Any questions from, any other questions from the committee?
I have a statement, Joel, if you don't mind. I have a statement, if you don't mind.
Please, go ahead.
I know that one thing when we looked at this, you know, we were worried about, you know, this particular business going in across from our new stadium, and rightfully so. You know, we need to be proud of our stadium. However, this same business, when we were in our last playoff game this year, had a space right across the street from a very nice stadium in Midland. I mean, it was very well kept, did not deter anything, any other businesses in the area, and I was very impressed with it. So that being said, I will shut up.
Anybody else? Just, if I could, the conditional use would be permitted in the district, but subject to any regulations the council might put on it, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that includes whether it's the setback, I mean, whether it is screenings, particular screening of any kind, or anything else within the area, correct?
Yes, sir. Screening, landscaping, access points.
Any buffers, everything?
Buffers, I mean, wide range of, wide range of specific conditions that could be listed in there for the permit itself.
And those are for specific items? I mean, for each one that might apply?
Yes, sir. Each permit would not have to be a cookie cutter decision. It could be, one could be unique to, would be unique to the other.
And would each of those go to the planning and zoning first, and then come to the council?
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit application would first be reviewed, and a public hearing held by Public, I'm sorry, Development Services, or Planning, Planning and Zoning Commission, and then brought to the council with their recommendation. And if I may, before I let it slip my mind, if we choose to move forward with this, the first step would be to send it to P and Z for a public hearing for the revision to the zoning ordinance, and then from P and Z, a recommendation would come to the city council for final action on the adoption of the ordinance.
The committee members and everyone on the council has got a copy of the proposed ordinance that you're talking about there. What is the wish of the, oh, yes.
I'm not on the committee, but if I may, I would urge caution, this particular instance, because that, that business operator is a well-known and has multiple operations, you know, across the state currently, and they seemingly do a good job. All of them that I've ever seen are very clean and very neat. And in that one instance, for that one operator, that might be all right. But if you put this in as a conditional use, you can almost guarantee that you're gonna have requests from some others. They may not be as conscientious as this operator is. And if you, if you grant one with a certain amount of restrictions on it, the next one that comes to you, if you impose more restrictions, you run the risk of having problems with them because of that. And it's gonna be hard for us as council members to anticipate who may come, and then what we may need to try to control on them. And I think Mr. Killen will agree that if we allow this and impose restrictions A, B, and C, then if we come back and say, oh, we should have done so-and-so, I think it's too late at that point if it's not imposed from the very beginning to go back and amend that conditional use. Is that right, Mr. Killen?
So I haven't had any experience with that type of circumstance, but I believe that would be the case. So it would be important that we would, you know, have a good idea of what we expected from that particular business owner before we granted a conditional use.
Right.
And I would suspect that the, you know, the safest approach would be if we're not comfortable with it, then, you know, the conditional use would not be approved, and maybe we could have more research and further discussion with the developer and bring that back, you know, at a committee level for discussion before it went back on an agenda.
And that's my hesitation on it, Mr. Cook, is the fact that, you know, once you open that, and I think Mr. Thomas agreed that my summation was correct, that once you grant it, you can't go back and make it more restrictive later on. So...
Talking about that?
On that, on that particular property.
Yes, sir.
So...
But on other properties, you can.
Yes.
Yeah, but if you make one mistake, and it's in the wrong place, it could create real problems for adjoining property owners, et cetera. That's my concern with it, Mr. Cook.
Yep. You have a question, John?
I think when we talked about this, was it back in June?
Yes.
I think the thing that we were, it was the aesthetics of where it's located and where the stadium's located. David just said that he had seen something over in Midland. I didn't have to be at that game. I think that's what we have to process. Does it fit in the aesthetics of the stadium? We also have a junior high school just to the left, right there also. And the only thing that I, when people came and visited last time, and I don't know this, I've gotta be sure of this, is that some of them were concerned about the smell. Where could it drift? And I can say assure you... Where could it drift and they, they, I can say assured to say couldn't, but still, I, 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 I don't know. I mean, they, is that, is that, can they, you know, we got, we got a junior high sitting right down the street, the wind's blowing? We got a game right across the road, the wind's blowing? Those are, those are some of my concerns.
I believe they have, I believe they have operational hours where, you know, for games, I mean, that wouldn't.
Are we for sure that they're gonna, they're gonna have the operation hours, not, not to spray during, I don't know, I, that's why I'm, I'm just bringing it up.
I don't, I'm just assuming, I sent you a picture of the one across from, uh, from Midland, so.
Uh, Lee, anything for me?
Well, the only thing I would say concerning what Juan just said, um, I launched next door to one six months ago and they were in full operation, people coming and going or whatever, I didn't smell anything, so, I don't, so.
That's important, that's very important.
I agree with you.
Maddie, anything for you?
I just worry that it's gonna open a can of worms later on down the, down the road, we just gotta make sure that we dot all of our i's and cross all of our t's when we're doing this, the first time if you choose to report with it.
Brandon?
Uh, like a couple of people said, I mean, every one of these operations that I've, I've seen, they're, this particular company, they're, uh, a top-notch, you know, modern facility with all the proper precautions and equipment in place. I don't think this is gonna have any kind of detrimental impact on, uh, on the, the area where it's talking about being put, I don't, I don't see a problem with it at all.
Only thing I'd remind the committee of is, we, we, we've concentrated, we've talked a lot about a specific thing, but if we change this, it is for everything, I mean, it isn't for, it could be anyplace in town.
But every time something comes up, this.
Not necessarily that company, you know?
But every time this comes up, I mean, it's gonna go before P and Z, it's gonna come before us.
Exactly.
So we can say no anytime we want to on any individual property.
And, and we can also put any kind of conditions on each one individually as well, correct?
To, to be clear and follow what Mr. Cook's saying, two things in front of you tonight. One is the definition of conditional use permit that would go across B one, B two, all the different zoning classifications, 'cause we have kinda started centering on one specific thing. So that's, that's one request, is do you want to forward on, for consideration, the changing of that definition in the ordinance? And then the second piece is, do you want to add in B two, a conditional use for paint and body shop?
Right.
So, those are the two things.
And then basically, this is going to go with this planning and zoning, for them to review, uh, to take some kinda action, to make recommendation back to the council. And then it's gonna come back to this council before we review it. So, what's the wish of the committee?
I move that we proceed with the proposed revisions, uh, the land use regulations for B two retail and commercial zoning district.
Second.
Uh, send it to the, uh, P and Z committee.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
Okay.
That, uh, Mayor, that is the only item that we have, this, this will, um, be forwarded on to the planning and zoning for, uh, for their review and for their recommendation back to the council.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, and thank you very much for reviewing all of this and, and actually doing all the research and stuff. Thank you, Steve, Ms. Smith?
Once again, I don't have anybody to pass my presentation off to, but, uh, we have the open seats on a few of our boards that we have applicants that we'd like to fill. Uh, the first open seat is on the library advisory board, our applicant is Kathleen Goodwin, and she is a member of the Twentieth Century Club. And I believe the committee received the packet in their email for their application.
Madam Chair, I'd make the recommendation to appoint Kathleen Goodwin to fill the vacancy in the library advisory board, place four.
Second.
Uh, anybody have any questions or concerns? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then the next is the Main Street Advisory Board, uh, we have two seats currently open. The first applicant is Car- is Charlene Sutton, I believe it was, Carlene, Charlene Sutton. She is, she's a county resident, which she's allowed on the Main Street boards, we're allowed up to two, uh, to sit on the, um, boards. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about Carlene's application?
Madam Chair, I'd make the recommendation, I'd make the motion to recommend to council to appoint Carlene Sutton to place one of the Main Street Advisory Board.
Second.
Uh, any questions or concerns? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The next one is Kennedy, uh, Volker, she is a Tarleton student. We looked her up online, she's very involved and I think she would personally be a great fit to, um, maybe give a new insight to our Main Street Advisory Board, she's, she's quite young. She'll have different eyes and different ideas, I think, that might be enlightening to some or not, but I think, I would like to make the recommendation that we move Kennedy Volker to place seven on the Main Street Advisory Board.
Second.
Any questions or concerns? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Perfect. The next one is tourism and visitors bureau, um, place one was originally Chelsea Melhazen, she just did not turn in her application back in December, January, when we did all the re-upped for current board members, but she has turned in her application now. So, um, with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Chelsea Melhazen back to place one on the, uh, tourism and visitor bureau.
Second.
Any questions or concerns? All in favor, say aye. And Western Heritage, there is an ex aficionado seat open, but those positions have been moved to the tourism and visitor boards to fill, uh, I believe that's correct. So with that, that is all I have for the nominations committee tonight.
Ms. Turfey?
Yes, sir, um, I'm sorry. So, the way our Western Heritage Board works, the, um, ex aficionados are actually, uh, appointed by myself, so I would like to appoint Caitlin Warrior to fill the ex aficionado spot that we have available. We actually have two available, but we will fill place one of the ex aficionado, Caitlin Warrior.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is six oh four, we'll, uh, adjourn our city council committee meetings and convene into our special city council meeting. I'll call us to order. And we have several items, before I get into our agenda items, July, would you like to introduce your guest? We've talked about medical students from A and M coming in and being part of the Stevensville community, getting to know the community here, there's, there's not a lot here tonight, sometimes we'll be full, but, uh, we have dinner tomorrow night, it's actually, several of us do with you today. So, you're, you wanna introduce her, and she's a student at A and M Medical School?
Yes, this is Sam G, and, um, she's, uh, just on day three, I think, uh, two weeks of being here in Stevensville, so getting to see what rural medicine looks like and, and choose that as an option whenever she finishes all of her, um, lots of training and graduate work.
Including considering rural Texas Stevensville. We love, glad you're here today, thank you for coming. Okay, we'll go to our regular agenda item, first item is to consider approval of a Tarleton Street MOU. Uh, and with us tonight, we have Creedus Baker, who is assistant to the president, we have Rick Powell, who is the CFO, and Nate Burrell, right? Who is the, uh, director of marketing or vice president of marketing and communications, so we have a, we're gonna sign an agreement tonight with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if you remember at the last meeting, we briefly talked about, uh, an upcoming, uh, partnering opportunity uh, between the city and Tarleton State University to start down the path of revitalizing, uh, Tarleton Street from McLehaney, hopefully all the way down to the trail. And so, since that time, uh, we've had some more meetings and so we're ready to present, uh, this memorandum of understanding to you tonight, uh, for your approval. And then from here, we'll kinda start getting down into the nitty gritty, if you will. Uh, Mr. Williams and, and his team have worked on giving us block by block, uh, projected costs. And so, uh, Dr. Powell and I, uh, will kinda get together beyond this and start deciding kinda what bites we can take, at, at what time, uh, and once that's kind of established, then we would come back before you with a budget presentation from us and then, uh, request formal action from the council, uh, to begin that process. So this will be kinda the first step in, in creating that formal partnership tonight and then we'll start moving forward from there to proceed down the path of getting some actual work done. But we're talking about sidewalks, lighting, uh, all of those things to present a better pedestrian pathway into our downtown area, our parks, into our trails.
Mention, remind the council about the grant applications, can go in for that as well?
So we do have an open grant application, uh, that you guys approved a resolution for, uh, this year for CDBG funds, Community Development Block Grant, and so, uh, that request has been sitting, uh, at Texas Department of Agriculture. We are in the next step of that process, which is to detail a more formal, uh, kinda project with those funds and also, uh, I believe we have some public meetings that have to occur, Mr. Williams?
We, we have a public hearing that will be next Monday, uh, just a requirement, and then we're gonna select a professional firm to bring that to you.
Now, these two projects couldn't overlap, so that's another piece of it, is, is defining what would be covered by CDBG funds separate from what, uh, our regular funds and any university funds would cover. But this, this agreement tonight kinda would allow a formal start to that process and, and move us down that path.
And I just wanna mention, this is the hundred twenty-fifth anniversary of Tarleton State University, it's a big deal for them, it's a big deal to City Stevensville, we appreciate, uh, Creedus has always been a big pusher of cooperation, coordination between the city and the university, I appreciate what you do, Creedus, and the, the work that you do. Would you like, you wanna come up and address either one of y'all, any of you? I mean, it's a, it's a big deal to talk about how we work together as a team. It's, you're, you're the biggest financial input into our city and it's good that we cooperate like this.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone, it's good to see you all. Um, I'm happy to speak on behalf of Tarleton's one twenty-fifth committee, I'm co-chairing with Donna Strohmeyer, who I understand was here last council meeting, um, and we do, we desire to collaborate with you all on this project. We think it's, um, uh, really speaks to our shared history, uh, with the city of Stevensville and our shared commitment to collaborate. So, happy to answer any questions that I can about it, um, we, Tarleton, uh, just seeks to collaborate uh, and make the street more pedestrian friendly, more beautiful for the community, um, to celebrate our one twenty-fifth.
One of the cool things is the way they're gonna have to cross the railroad tracks. It's gonna be a challenge, but it was interesting to get, sit through that engineering discussion.
That, yes, there's a lot that goes into railroad tracks I didn't know about, but yes.
It's a big deal, but crossing arms for pedestrians.
Yes.
Sidewalk crossing guard, interesting.
Yes.
Any questions for, Dr. Baker?
I do wanna give some credit to Mr. Brown, who is on our one twenty-fifth committee for really helping us conceive of the idea to connect Tarleton with the Main Street project and wanna give you all kudos for, um, selecting Kennedy to serve on that advisory committee, so, thank you all.
With that in mind, do I hear a motion?
May I make the motion that we approve, um, the agreement with Tarleton?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you all very much, I guess we'll get the official document signed later? Or do we have it?
I have it.
Let's do it. Thank you very much, appreciate y'all very much, your cooperation, we need to visit about that piece of property too. I like that, I'll call you tonight at the council. Next item on the agenda is to take action, a resolution directing the notice of intent to issue certificates of obligation to be posted to the city website and published in a newspaper circulated within the city and approving all other matters pertaining thereto. You wanna make the presentation?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, for the last several months, uh, we've had some work session discussions pertaining to the issuance of possible debt, uh, you were presented with a lot of information, varying amounts, different things like that. Uh, at the last work session, uh, you guys kinda directed staff to prepare, uh, this resolution to come before you tonight. And so really, it's the first formal step in a debt issuance, uh, that would come down the line. And so if you choose, uh, if you pass this resolution, it then provides notice to the public, uh, has some requirements for website publication, newspaper publication, that says, uh, we intend to issue some certificates of obligation, uh, it has a maximum amount, uh, of twenty-two million. And then forty-six days from now would be the earliest that you could consider a vote to then finalize, uh, an issuance and then issue that debt. And so this doesn't mean you're doing it, this just simply is providing a notice that that's the path you intend to go down and then meet all the legal requirements for posting and notification and those things.
Talk about the timing as far as public input, et cetera. Will I have hearings, will I have a published, I guess we're gonna have a conversation with the citizens again and come up and I have people sign up to come talk to us.
Uh, forty-six days from now is the earliest, you would have another meeting and you could certainly, uh, have, allow people to speak and those things, yes, sir.
And then, can I ask one question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so when we're saying the max amount, that doesn't mean that we have to do that amount, we can do anything up to that amount, or we can do nothing at all?
That would be correct.
Okay, just to make sure that that's. So twenty-two million, what is that, that's nine cents, nine, or?
Ian?
Those were projections at the, at the, at the time, uh, this debt, as it's being considered, would all be considered on the interest and sinking or INS portion of the tax rate, uh, that is used strictly for debt service. And so with the projections, uh, that you were looking at with different repayment options, uh, yes, ma'am, that's roughly correct.
Other questions? Do I hear a motion?
I would urge caution on the part of the council, there's, there's a significant amount of street work that needs to be done. As chair of public works, I'm well aware of that, but the, the, the burden on the taxpayer for that amount, in my opinion, is, is greater than they should be compelled to bear. Uh, it, it's still my opinion that we should go to a smaller amount, do what we can as far as restoration and maintenance of streets and then use the balance of maybe six million at max to start doing plans and designs and doing the engineering for some of the larger projects that will take more time and obviously more money. And then come back in three, four, or five years at the appropriate time when we feel comfortable with it and borrow more money and do those projects then, one or two or three at a time, whatever we think we can afford. I just think, and it's gonna be closer to a dime probably, to answer your question, but the time for the twenty-two million, it's gonna be closer to a dime and I think the impact on the majority of the taxpayers and especially the businesses, because businesses don't get any exemptions for homesteads or over sixty-five or anything else, it's gonna be a significant increase to them along with the other things that we know are coming in the water, wastewater, stormwater, and all the other fees that we're gonna need to impose. And I, I, I think the council needs to be cautious.
Anybody else? Do I hear a motion?
Sorry, I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
The motion tonight is just the.
Publish it.
Publishing that we are considering issuing that we're not accepting the twenty-two million, correct?
No, ma'am.
Perfect, thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we, uh, oh gosh, what are we doing here? Oh, here it is, there it is, thank you, Brandon. Uh, move to adopt a resolution directing a notice and intent to issue, issues certifications, certificates of obligation be posted to the city website and published in the newspaper, in a newspaper and approving all other matters pertaining thereto.
Second.
Uh, motion, a second?
Mayor, I'd like to request a roll call vote.
Okay, place one?
Yay.
Place two?
Yes.
Yes.
Place three?
Yes.
Place four?
None.
Place five?
This is just to, we're not accepting any dollar amounts tonight.
Correct. Please six?
Yes.
Seven?
Aye.
Eight?
No.
Motion passes. Next item is to consider approval of ERSI Enterprise Licensing Agreement. I'm assuming you'll do that one?
Well, it says on the staff report, I will.
We'll get after it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we maintain a contract with a company called Esri to do our geographical information, software, and all of those things. It's time to re-up the contract for that, and so, you see a budgeted amount in front of you in the staff report for $30,200. So, any expenditure over 25,000 has to come before council, so we're asking for your approval to spend those dollars tonight.
Question? You have no questions, or I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the ERSI Enterprise License Agreement as presented.
And a motion, a second, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. With that, in compliance with the provisions of Texas Open Mediums Law, subchapter D, Government Code, Vernon's Texas Code annotated, in accordance with, and I read this exactly what it's supposed to be every time, in section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property to deliberate the purchase exchange lease or value, real property to with, real property located in city addition. We will be back in a minute.